We're on.
We're on. Let's give it a minute. It'll take a little while for people to connect.
Mm-hmm.
But we are live right now.
Another former student, what came called, look her sweetie, she's telepathic. Whoever's in charge of hiring here, they all like this stuff.
Who?
A student, former student of Elizabeth's firm.
Okay.
Okay, Elizabeth, it looks to me like it's kind of stabilized with people coming in if you want to call.
Okay, so we'll call this work session of the Decatur Board of Education to order at 7:05 by Zoom. And four of the members are present here at the Elizabeth Wilson Center. And Jana is present at home on Zoom. And so, as we did last time we did this, if we, if you cannot hear us, we will do our best to project to the microphone in the middle of the room. But if there's a problem, send us a text and let us know that we need to speak up. And we'll try to make sure that we can be heard. So our agenda today is to discuss the recommendations of the Stakeholder Committee. It has an acronym that I refuse to use. Do you want to present the, give, provide an introduction? And then the format, I think, is that we're simply going to have questions and comments from the board.
Yes, let me, I'm going to share my screen. Just, I want to show people a couple of things. So first of all, thank you to everybody who was able to attend the town hall. We got through a lot of great information there. Some of this will be repeated probably, so, you know, it's never a bad thing to hear it twice. But I do want to bring a couple of things to folks' attention, just to make sure they know it's there. The first thing is, on all of our school and district sites, we've added a new top-level menu item. It's not always labeled the same, but on the district one, it's COVID-19. And that's a really quick way to get to our reporting dashboard. The opening 2020 page, which we've been maintaining since the summer. And then the Stakeholder Planning Committee. Couple of quick things, it didn't come up in the, in the meeting or the town hall, but we do have our dashboard up and running, and that's how you can access it. And it will show you how many people are currently isolated and quarantined. And it will also show you where our, how things have looked over time and the one locations, as well as the narrative, in case you want to understand a specific situation. You can look at the bottom, and it'll talk about the specific situation. So we update this as cases come in. There are times our communications will go out to a school, to a classroom, things like that, before this gets updated, because we want to take care of that stuff first. So there may be a day, a day lag or so between when we identify and do our contact tracing and when it shows up here. But as soon as we've finished our contact tracing, we put the information here. So this is a spot to watch to see how things are looking in the district. So the Stakeholder Planning Committee, I want to talk a little bit about the Stakeholder Planning Committee real quickly, and then we can jump into the report and recommendations and whatnot. So as all of you know, we kicked off our school year this summer. We were talking with experts about trying to get going and helping us go plan for our school year. And it went well, but unfortunately, a lot of that was happening behind the scenes. And so, we know that people really wanted to see more transparently what was going on. And we also benefited by having a whole lot of people who stepped up. So I think about half the CDC lives within the city of Decatur. And maybe another 25% of the people here are like professors of epidemiology and biological sciences and whatnot. So if you look at this report, you'll see we've had an amazing group of folks step up and volunteer to help us and do so very publicly. So I am very grateful for all of the amazing work they did. We did this on a very short timeframe. We put out a call for volunteers. We had over 60 people right off the bat, from various walks of life, with lots of different expertise and talents. But what they all had in common was hard work, and they jumped right in. We only met, I think, as a committee three times. And we ended up spending most of that time in our subcommittees, because they just really wanted that kind of work, and it worked out very well. And then a lot of the subcommittees met multiple times outside of that, I think. So they did a Herculean effort to pull this together in a very short timeframe. And so I'm very grateful for that. So I do encourage people to thank their, their friends and neighbors who participated in this, because it was a huge task, and they put a lot of work into it and a lot of effort. So what you have here with this report is really seven reports. Each subcommittee wrote their own report. And then we pulled those reports together and put them into, into this one overarching report. And so it's organized by subcommittee. And it goes through, each subcommittee was provided a format to try to follow, so that there would be some consistency between the subcommittees. And then we also color-coded all of the subcommittees. So as you're looking through the document, you can see, on page seven is where probably the easiest color coding to see. And then on the left side of each page, you'll see a colored bar. And that helps you know which section you're looking at, because it can get a little confusing sometimes. And then within each section, all of the links and things are also the same color coding. So you can quickly figure out which section it is that you're looking at. So, so that's the report in general. The, there are a whole lot of recommendations in here. I started pulling them all together, because as you read through the report, you'll see there are lots of recommendations that get repeated in different committees. There's some recommendations that contradict each other, and you can't do them both. You got to do one or the other. And so we have started trying to pull those together to kind of create what are the overarching recommendations of what are in the report. And so that work continues. There are a lot more there than we realized when we first started the project. But, so we'll pull that together and share that for folks who want a more summarized version of what the recommendations look like and kind of categorized. And hopefully that will be done pretty soon. So the other thing I want to share is kind of timeline, because I know a lot of people are interested in where are we with all of this process? And what's happening when? And so this was the first big step in getting our plan for second semester in place. This work session is another big step in that process of getting the input from our board members. Questions you have, thoughts you have, perspectives, et cetera. Tomorrow, we meet with Administrative Council, which is all the principals, cabinet members, and some other directors in the district. So we will talk over the report, the questions from town hall that came up, and any feedback we get from this meeting. And we will do our best to get as close as we can to a plan as possible. We are fortunate that we have another board meeting on Tuesday night. So if, when we leave this work session, we feel like we need to have further discussion about any topics, or if there's any directions you need to provide to the administrative team, things to look at or explore prior to making a plan, and we need to discuss again, we have that opportunity right away on Tuesday night. So, so that is fortunate. That works out pretty well that way. And so I shared in the town hall that the soonest we will be able to release a plan would be Monday, and that would assume that we're just all on the same page here, and there's, and we can just move forward with planning. The latest would be hopefully Wednesday, if at all possible. And that would be if we need to use that Tuesday night to kind of finalize some things. So, trying to think what else. Oh, and we met with Teacher Advisory Council yesterday as well. And we started talking through some of the ideas with them and getting their feedback on the report and answering their questions and whatnot. So that's kind of where we are in terms of the whole overall structure of things and timing, along with the presentation of like a plan that will also coincide with going back to parents to ask them to make their learning choice. If you had a chance to tune into the town hall, you heard me share, we're going to change that slightly. And we are going to try to have a little more nuance in the learning choice survey for parents. So that rather than just saying, do you want each child to come in person or virtual, we're going to give them two other options to say, we want them in person, but we can keep them virtual if you need us to. Or we want them virtual, but we can send them in person if needed or if available. So that way, we'll have a little more nuance. That will help our schools do their planning. Because we're still, just like always, we're in this chicken and egg scenario. You develop the plans that are based on a certain number of people, but you don't know how many people it's going to be. But you need to provide specific plans for people to make their choice. So it's this chicken egg kind of thing. And I feel like by doing this more nuanced approach of parent choices, we're able to get the information we need. And we're pretty sure, just based on the original learning results or learning choices survey, that we should be able to accommodate what we can accommodate in our schools and still maintain the class size that we want to maintain, and still maintain all the different mitigation measures we want to maintain, while still meeting the needs of what the choices are for the community. So that's our goal, and that's kind of our timeline of where we are with everything. Somebody had asked me the other day, where did the learning choice end up? Like what did it, what did it look like? Were we 80/20? Were we 60/40? Were we 50/50? We were almost exactly 50/50. So just as a point of reference, it was within like a tenth of a percentage point or something like that, between the choices for in-person and virtual. So we were right at about 50/50. That's where we are. There are some things, we're happy to answer whatever questions about the report you have. I also would really like to hear your thoughts, where there are things that, and I could prompt you for some of the more timely things that we really need to talk about. Your thoughts on the report and things that kind of align with your perspective of the direction we should be going. And then we have some ideas to throw out with you to suggest and get your feedback on that can help inform what our next step looks like. So, do you want to jump into any questions or comments about the report meeting?
I was going to ask you, as I mentioned, if you could give us a summary of what we are doing now in person, talk about college heights, talk about extracurriculars, talk about staff who's been on-site. It would be a nice, I think, basis to go from, to know what we have been doing so far and what we've been doing and whether it's been successful.
Absolutely. So let me start with, so the obvious ones are college heights. The Birth of Three program has been back in operation since, I think, October 12th, if I remember correctly. And that's going well. We, by the time we opened, our class sizes were already a little smaller, I think, because people had gone to other options at that point. Because obviously, you can't provide daycare virtually, right? You're either providing it or you're not. So, so that, that is going well. We did have a little hiccup where there was a problem. The federal grant changed for some of our kids and how they were supported. But Sarah Garland and her team worked through that amazingly well. We were able to reseat all of those kids who would have been displaced, who wanted to stay. We were able to keep them in the program in other vacant seats that we had. Things are going well there. We have, I'll, I can pull it up here. One of the things on our opening 2020 page in the menu is the in-person proposals. So you may recall that we talked about the proposal process, and you can see there are quite a few there. I don't know if that's what, maybe 30 or 40? And those are proposals that were put together by various groups or individuals saying, hey, we think we can safely come back in person. And I encourage you to read through some of those, because they really had to think deeply about what are the mitigation measures we're going to put in place? How are we going to ensure fidelity of implementation of those measures? What are we going to do if something happens? Why do we even need to do this? What's the benefit of it? And what's the risk if we don't do it? And things like that. So these are very good. We still have proposals coming in that we are looking at as they come in. And so that's been going very well. So I don't have a specific count right off the top of my head. I'll get that for you, of how many kids are involved in these and how many are involved in early childhood. And then the final group that has been meeting regularly is our Adaptive Need Special Education Curriculum, or students that have been meeting throughout the district. And that has been going well as, as well. There are some understandable challenges with that, like some, some kids in that program have trouble wearing a mask, for instance. And so we're working through, what do we do, right? If they can't wear a mask, and it's just not something we can train them to do in short order and help them learn, what are the other options? Or are there other options? And maybe there aren't. So we are working through some of those issues as well. One of the recommendations, I think it was in this report, although I've read so many reports, I may be mistaken, but they used a high-need special ed classroom as an example and said, if you have a student or two who's not able to wear a mask, that's a great time to put extra air purification into the system, into the, into the building, or into the classroom, I mean, as an example. So you're doing something extra to try to mitigate the additional risk that comes from that. So we're exploring some options there. So we have had some cases within the district, which is in that dashboard. I'll just pull that up again real quick. I don't think, I'm speaking off the top of my head, I don't think any of these cases originated in the district. But we did have people who have been on-site, who we had to isolate, which is what this left column is about. And we have had people who we then had to quarantine, because we had somebody who either tested positive or had symptoms and had a connection with other, someone who had tested positive. And so we had to quarantine some folks. One of the things, while we're here too, just to double, kind of reiterate, it's on the, it's on the dashboard, but the way we are recording our quarantines, it is possible for people to be double counted, because the way this dashboard is set up, it's based off each case. So if you had two cases that were independent, but they both had contact with the same people, the people who are quarantined will be counted twice, because it goes back to the case. So this is a, is a maximum number of quarantine. In some cases, it's actually slightly fewer, because they kind of get double counted in certain situations. So we're working on that to try to fix that. But right now, in order to keep this up, we have to keep it as simple as possible, but.
I wonder, you know, the most concerning thing is plus the cases. I mean, the cases, like you said, are disruptive. But if we have in-school transmission, then we have a problem. Because that means that we're putting people at risk.
Correct. That's what we call an outbreak at that point.
Then, okay. And so, and so it might be that, you know, what I was going to ask is if you have something on the dashboard to indicate, you know, and I guess the question would be, all right, we had a case, we did the contact tracing, if we find other cases within the, within the, what do we call them, pods, within the group, the cluster. That ought to be noted separately. And then you'd also want to, you know, follow up, whether there's reason to believe that that is how it got transmitted, or if they got it independently from some source.
No, that is a great point. We haven't had that situation yet, which is why I don't think we thought to put it on the dashboard. But I totally agree. If we have anywhere, I think the definition they have is if you have two cases that you don't have some other linkage together, you assume that they were transmitted within the school environment, and you consider that an outbreak, and you close down the school, you quarantine every.
Until you figure out what's going on.
Classroom until you figure out what's going on. So you're absolutely right. We'll get that added before we go back to any large-scale in-person.
Good.
Dr. Duty, and I just wanted to clarify that there, there were some cases at ECLC this, when, when ECLC reopened this summer that are not included on here, right? It happened in July.
I think we had gotten those in there, but I apologize. It does look like they're not in there. I thought we had added them. But we are, we will get those added in. There were some cases this summer, right at the end of the summer, for sure, which is why we shut down ECLC until we could decide more. I apologize. I thought we had gotten those in there, but I do not see them.
I think it starts October 17.
Yeah, I thought we had updated that, but that might only be as a sandbox version, where we were testing it. A little bit about contact tracing, just because I know that question comes up a lot. We have developed the infrastructure of contact tracing. It's a little frustrating that that falls almost entirely on the school system to figure that out. We do have a contact at the County Department of Public Health, but it's more of us, for us to report to them what we're finding. It's not them doing the contact tracing. When it leaves our building, it does become their responsibility. And if it's not involving people here, we don't, we're not the ones to investigate that. But for anybody who's on our site, our nurses are doing the lead on all of that contact tracing. So you may have heard in the town hall about, they go through a training through Johns Hopkins, I believe it is, to learn how to contact trace, and what kind of questions they need to ask, and how to record it, and things like that. And then all of that is run by our lead nurse for the district. She is our primary contact for that. We are training other people at the schools in anticipation of potentially coming back. And so we will have more people at schools trained, so that, because obviously, contact tracing, you can probably can understand, is a very time-laborious process. And it often, it often requires calling people back again and again, either because you can't get in touch with them, or you learned something from a further, a later person, and you need to go back to somebody else. And so there is a, it's quite a process, and our nurses have really stepped up to get that done. And I appreciate that. They are going to need more support, especially at the bigger schools, as we have significant numbers of people coming back. And so we are working on that. We have been, we just started our first meeting with ABC Science Collaborative. And so if you're not familiar with them, they started in North Carolina on a Duke University. And they're providing support and research and whatnot throughout North Carolina, but they're expanding to other states. And so we're one of the first districts they're going to work with in Georgia. And the Emory professor and doctor who is going to help lead that for Georgia happens to be one of our residents, who is already on our Stakeholder Planning Committee. And so that's really awesome. So she's going to be a great resource for us, as well as all the other things that they have done. And one of the things she can help us with is interfacing with the Department of Public Health and for the County Department of Public Health, to try to get some of these situations figured out, to make sure we're as efficient as possible with contact tracing, for instance, and how we're doing it and getting the support we need. So that's, that's encouraging to have that type of support as well. But obviously, contact tracing is a huge part of this, and one of the many cogs that make the whole thing work. And so, so far, it's been going well, but it does take a lot of time and effort.
David, I have a question, a couple of questions. In, in the support that we're receiving from ABC Science, is there any financial commitment for their services?
No, there's not. There, there may be an option, and I don't know, we only had our first meeting today, but there may be an option to use, they have an app that they've developed that helps you with your contact tracing, and it's also your symptom checker, I think. So that families can do their reporting of, yes, I've checked my kid's temperature, checked whatever. And I think there might be a small cost if you decide to use the app. But the collaborative itself is funded through the National Institute of Health. And so it's funded that way. So if we don't use that, like that product, I think it's, there's no cost to it for us. There's cost to it, obviously, but it's funded through grants.
Okay. And then my first question about the report is on page 17.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so I just need clarification, like at the bottom, that first asterisk that gives some explanation about the number of new cases per 100,000 persons. And then they mentioned that it's the, you add the DeKalb County, Fulton, Gwinnett and Cobb. And then later in the report, I saw where DeKalb County was just mentioned by itself. And so I was just trying to get a better understanding. Are we using those, you know, the numbers for those four counties? Or are we looking at, or if, if metrics is taken into consideration, what are we looking at in terms of location? Does that make sense?
Yeah. So the first part of the question, so right now, if you go to our dashboard, it is all based on just DeKalb County. And what this metrics group is recommending is that we expand that to those four counties, so that we capture more of the Atlanta area in general, not just DeKalb County. So that's why you see the four counties listed there, is that's basically a recommendation for a change, to, to look broader than just DeKalb County. And just while we're on the topic, let me show you real quickly. If I can, yeah, there you go. We actually added a page to our dashboard when that conversation came up about looking at other counties. And so we have a county comparison page now. And it doesn't combine them all together yet, although that's pretty easy to do. Sorry, it takes a second to load, because there's a lot of data. There it is. So here is that same information we've been looking at over time. But now it includes Cobb County is the red line, DeKalb is the orange line, Fulton is the green line, and Gwinnett is the blue line. So we do have the data for all of the different counties. We actually have it for the whole state. I tried to reroute how the dashboard works. And so we can pull in any counties we want, and we can also combine them together. So if that's something that's attractive to the board, to look at metrics that way, we have the infrastructure to do it pretty easily. So this, this data is out there, so you can look at cases per county. You can look at the change in cases per county, and you can look at the percent positive by county, so. Did that answer your question, Jana?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I have one question about the report, which is that I think I've, I've read and have printed the preliminary version. It looks like we've got the slightly updated version.
Yeah.
Do I need a password to get into it?
No. If you go to, the easiest way to get to it is go to the homepage at siestecater.net. Cover over COVID-19 in the top, and click on COVID-19 Stakeholder Planning Committee. And then there's a link to the report on that page, right at the first link you come to.
I did want to also ask you about the pod. I was looking at the data that was available on our website, which was as of the end of October. It said that we had 370 requests at that time. And 220 of them were, were indicated, self-indicated at the level of the highest urgency. And at early November, it looked like we were able to accommodate about 100 of those students. How many are we accommodating now?
Let me see if I can pull that up real quick while we're talking. Second, let, I may have to come back to it, but let me look while we're talking.
And where, where I'm going with that is just that, that's another indicator for face-to-face interactions and whether that's been successful. And I'm also thinking one step further. When we start transitioning to face-to-face learning, the pods can add as flex space, because we will be limiting class sizes to allow for social distancing, but there may be more students who want or need to come back in person for many reasons, for educational reasons, but also just for being able to focus and have a better learning environment and have social interaction and those kinds of things. And so what I'm thinking is, as we find the limit for the class sizes, if there are more students who want to come back than, than can fit in the classroom, the overflow can be the pods. And perhaps those students can be rotated into the actual classroom, you know, on a bi-weekly basis, or however that would be, in sort of a hybrid model.
Right.
So that we can maintain social distancing. Because I think, you know, the, the thing that strikes me in this report that's very strong is that we have exceptional mitigation measures ready to go. I do, I do have some questions about some of, some of them, and why we're not maybe doing some things.
Sure.
Like temperature checks and testing. But we have very robust mitigation strategies. So, you know, that's one thing that I thought was great in the report, but included in that is social distancing. And so that, that's why my question about the pod comes in. And so that's why my question about the pods comes in, because I feel like that can give us some flexibility to perhaps accept more students on site while I still think it's not.
Yeah, so I found some counts while we were talking. So let me go back to that real quickly and then we can talk about mitigation type stuff. And also, I'll tell you anecdotally, so I was looking at the counts of what a classroom, because remember, our principals are looking at their classrooms and figuring out how many kids can a given classroom accommodate and still have room for the teacher to teach and still have six feet social distancing, et cetera. And most of those were able to accommodate more than 10 people per classroom, but let's just say it was at 10, okay? So for most of our classes, 10 is not far from about half the class, right? And so given that our previous results showed 50/50, hopefully, because half of those who said in person, half of the people said in person, but some of those are, we heard from very quickly saying, I don't have to send my kids back, right? So in order to not be able to meet the capacity of people who want to send their kids back and don't have another option, we would have to have a major change in, I think, just anecdotally, of what people's perception is of sending kids back and having to send them back. So I do think most likely, we will be able to accommodate those who say, I have to send my kid back and I don't have another option. So hopefully, just given the class sizes, we can accommodate. But here's some of the counts, and actually, the counts here, I have counts that cover everything we've been talking about in terms of numbers. So just to give you a feel, I'm just going to go through by school. I'll tell you how many students there are and how many pod students there are. And then I'll tell you how many adults are in the building for each of our schools, okay? So at Renfro, right now, we have 36 pod students. And we have, it varies, but about 26 to 36 adults in the building. At Oakhurst, we have 12 pod students. We have two adaptive special needs students and we have eight total adults. At Fave, we have 21 pod students, three adaptive special ed students and about 23 to 26 adults. At Claremont, we have 11 pod students and about six adults. At Tally, we have 19 pod students and about 13 adaptive curriculum students. We've actually combined some programs together there because of some staffing needs we needed to do. And we have about 20 to 26 adults. At D H S, we have 43 pod students and about, or two special ed, adaptive special ed and about 33 adults. At Winona Park, we have 22 pod students, two adaptive special ed students and some between 7 and 13 adults. At Glenwood, we've got seven pod students and one adaptive special ed. And then we have 15 adults. At Westchester, we have 14 pod students and two adaptive special ed and four to five adults. And then at ECLC, we have. Hold on, I'm just checking.
I think the ECLC numbers, those are just the kids registered, but I think the actual numbers are less. I'm waiting to hear back from Sarah on that, if you're using the documentation.
I'll wait on ECLC numbers, but we have, is it correct about 29 adults in the building?
Yeah, that's true. The kids are just every single kid that was on a roster, but I don't think everyone is coming.
So we'll get you the final count on ECLC, but about 29 adults, so.
So I guess, I'm trying to think how to have the conversation about this. And so maybe I'll start and preface the comment by thanking the committee again for all the work and effort and putting their names on the line and helping us to come up with recommendations. So what I'm going to say is not critical of that, but I very much appreciate the effort. The one, there's maybe two comments that I have, sort of big picture. The first is that I feel like missing in the committee is the focus on the impact to students of the choices that we make. And I feel like we continue to focus a lot on excellent mitigation strategies, which is essential. I would like to see an equally strong focus on the impact of our all-virtual learning, the impact that it's had on kids and what would be the impact to continue that? Because I think it's very, very, very strong. I think these are really strong and bad impacts that we're seeing and experiencing and a lot of people have shared with us. And I don't feel like the committee report really kind of gives a voice to that. And I think it needs, I think it needs to be there. Doesn't necessarily need to be in a document, but we just need to keep it present in our minds that there's risks on both sides. There's risk in going to school and there is tremendous risk in staying home. And so there's no option that we have. So that's my first sort of commentary upon the recommendations. The second is that when we look at the metrics, you know, we have two sort of competing reports. And I understand, on the one hand, the desire to have metrics and the desire to believe that if we use this number, that there's a basis for saying that if that number is what we see, it's now safe. And if it's above that number, it's not safe. I understand the value of that in terms of communicating to people and in terms of making people feel safe, but I also think we all need to recognize that the numbers, in the end, are arbitrary, that we're drawing lines without having really a basis to draw, sadly, because we don't have that basis, right? And it, I think should affect the way that we make our decisions. You know, are we going to, because like I said, there's going to be risk on your side. So are we going to, are we going to take the risks by bringing staff into the buildings too early? Or are we going to take the risks by gambling that kids can go for a full year of COVID? Neither one is without risk. And we want these, the strong focus on metrics, when the metrics in the end are arbitrary to. That kind of leaves us, I think, in the end, having to make a judgment call about what we think based on what we've seen. The piece that I would go to there is that, what I would like to see, and this, I'm so happy that we're going to join the ABC Science Collaborative. What this group has done, and right now, most of their data is North Carolina because we'll be one of the first Georgia systems to join, but in North Carolina, they've been tracking schools. And they've been saying, for those schools that have opened, what has their experience been? And so if they opened and they had a mask policy, how did they do? Did they have in-school transmission or not? And if they didn't have a mask policy, how did that turn out? And they're actually, through this collaboration, communicating with the schools and they get the data. And when there are cases or outbreaks, they hear about it, they investigate. And the last time I checked in, their experience in North Carolina was very much that there aren't that many cases, but there, I think at the time, this is in October, they only had three reported outbreaks. And that means that I think that there were three instances in which two or more people, you know, appeared to have transmitted within school. And they went and investigated and said, what happened? And I know in one case, but I think maybe in all of them, I'm not sure about that, but they found that that school wasn't requiring masks on the students, you know? And so what I draw from that is that we have very good mitigation strategies, thanks to the recommendations of our committee and thanks to all the hard work that you and your staff have put into the plan. It looks like our mitigation strategies are literally second to none. I mean, we've got, we've got the mitigation strategies in place. And it looks like the evidence that we're seeing, not just from the schools and the collaborative, but elsewhere, is that with those strategies in place, we can return to face-to-face, we can do it safely. And we have the contact tracing framework set up. And we have the response strategy that if we have a case, here's what we're going to do. We're going to shut down immediately if there's an outbreak. If it's a case, we're going to investigate, contact trace. It looks like if you're going to balance risk, risk, at this point, given what we know about schools' actual experience, is that it's the higher risk to stay shut down. That it's the higher risk to continue what we're doing. And in my judgment, the lower risk to go ahead back in and implement these plans and get the kids back in the building, it's a choice. So get the kids who need to be or want to be in the building back in. And I guess that's just, that's my perspective on it. And I guess I just would note, I guess I just, that's my perspective on it. And I don't feel like the committee report, in the end, answers that question because we have a lot of recommendations. And I think, you know, like we should implement all of these mitigation strategies. We should do all the things that are recommended here. But in some places, they're contradictory or conflicting recommendations. And that's the way that I would.
You actually hit on the, this is one of the topics that I need to get your guys' perspective on, and that is how we want to handle metrics, right? Because we do have two different approaches in this report. And they're both valid, they both have research behind them, they both have reasoning behind them, but it's two different ways of looking at it. So I'm glad you brought it up because that is one of the things we definitely want to look at. To your first comment, we did have a student-focused subcommittee. So I do encourage you to go look at the, I can't remember what they called it, but there's a document they put together of questions we should keep in mind as we're making our decisions, which are very student-focused. So I do encourage you to look at that. But yeah, the metrics piece is important for us to have a feeling for what the board feels about that and where we are with that. I will share, I just learned of a superior-reviewed research that's going to be coming out, hopefully soon, that basically says what you, what you said. It shows that in the study, the schools that were back in session with appropriate mitigation measures actually had less transmission than places where the schools were virtual. And the hypothesis is the kids had a structured environment to go to that was very controlled, that they didn't have when they were home or able to go do other things that weren't in school. So we'll see when that comes out, what exactly it says. But it does appear there is some evidence coming out to support what you were just sharing with us. So, but yeah, I would love to hear your thoughts on metrics and where we go. I will remind you, one of the big things that came out of Teacher Advisory Council was predictability and understanding, like, the path that we're going down. So I do think we need to make sure, whatever path we go down, we keep that in mind. Because part of what will help our employees accept whatever plan comes up is having it be something that's predictable, so that it's not a surprise that, you know, A is happening or B is happening. So I'll just keep that, we should keep that top of mind as well as we're talking. But I'd love to hear more thoughts about metrics because that is a really important area. We need to figure out what to do.
Yeah, I think, that's a hard one because metrics is definitely important. And I think, especially in our community, science and numbers and data is very important. And for many of the group that, you know, want us to stay home, that's really where their focus is. And then you have the other side where the community wants us to make a decision and stick to it. And those are the two competing factors. Because if we make a decision and stick to it, then no matter what numbers look like, no matter what data, in January, we're doing it. And that is going to be seen as strong leadership on one hand, and then it's going to be seen as very irresponsible on the other. So that's a tough one. I think the other part adding into the conversation is, everything is showing us that the numbers are going to be pretty crazy and probably higher than we have ever seen with this particular virus in the next three months. You know, the California governor is shutting everything down, New York. So like, we're going to start seeing in the next couple of weeks that those kind of things will roll out. And so is our community able to handle the inflexibility of this particular decision? And I think that's the part that's really hard because I don't think we are.
Well, let me clarify one thing, since you bring it up. I do think there's a little misunderstanding about the second metrics report. So I do want to make sure that you guys know about one thing that's in there. Because I have heard some people refer to it as the metrics and the non-metrics reports. And I don't think that's really the case. There is a comment in the second report. And I just want to make sure you see it because it's easy to miss, even though it's bold and underlying. It's on the bottom of page 39 and it says, "We are not advocating for a full return to in-person schooling when risk levels are judged to be intolerably high." And so I think, just knowing the conversations of the committees that I sat in on, while they're not setting a specific number there, what they are saying is, this isn't just recklessly go back, it is, it's okay to have. Like, let's say that we maybe combine the two recommendations and we say, okay, in this recommendation, we have this table and we have these values. And so maybe we say, all right, you know, one of these is going to be, okay, at 200. If it's above 200, we're not going back. Or if it goes above 200 and we're back, we're going back to virtual, right? So I do think both of them have that in common in that there is a level. I think the difference between the two reports is, in the A level, they have set specific numbers in between. And in the B level, they have, or in the B report, they have said, that's not as important as making sure you have the mitigations in place and the other thing, that you can still keep the people safe. So I just wanted to clarify that because I have heard some folks felt like the one was throw metrics out. And that's not really what they're saying, so, just to clarify. And for a point of reference, I don't know if you noticed it on here, but, I mean, we are over 200 right now, right? So there's the numbers in our county. And so DeKalb County right now is at 263.25, right? So we're pretty high, it has gone up considerably. So if, for instance, we said that unacceptably high level is 200, that, like referencing that report, in this case, we would say, so we're not ready to go back. Regardless of which approach we would take, if we set the number there, if we set a number. So just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I think that, I think that, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Oh, so we're just finishing up on the metrics then. I think if we want to go ahead and give at least some definitive clarity to teachers and the community, the decision has been made and this is what's going to happen regardless, then I kind of like that approach then, because I think it's, we still have to take metrics into account. And there probably still will be some that don't think we should because of the level of passage in schools. But I just think that's probably, that's just going to be pretty dangerous. And, oh, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, shoot. So anyway, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to jump on that train, if you will. I agree, I guess metrics can be arbitrary in a certain way, like the speed limit can be arbitrary, right? Like 65 versus 70, I'm not sure that I care, but you've got to draw a line. And I've written down here, what is intolerably high?
Right.
Part two, please. And why this can't be one report where they agree on defining intolerable.
And just to clarify, this committee would have submitted one report if they had had a bunch more time to be able to do so. And I do think that they would all agree, they could have come to a single recommendation, but it might have taken another month or two months or whatever to get to that point. And that's when I said, I'd rather have the reports and the rationale so that we can keep moving, so.
I get that it's, we just keep passing the buck now, right? Like, we all agree that the, it would be lovely if, you were eloquent at the last school board meeting. It would be nice if, if the federal or the state, if they said, this is your metric. And the city of New York has said 3% and we're not opening. And then some of the speed, the people that I've spoken to on this first committee are like, the state of Georgia may have a 3% positive rate of COVID for the rest of history, right? Like, there's just something different culturally about us, we don't get vaccinated, we just don't wear masks. I mean, like, that's not reasonable. I'm like, well, then what is intolerably high? I mean, it's just not. I mean, it's just not, I don't.
And I think to that point, it is a judgment call, right? And I think a lot of this is a judgment call of what, exactly, how do you define that? I think is a good point.
If, if I could, but I won't, if I'm.
I think Dana had something.
Yes, Dana, I'd like to jump in at some point.
So.
All right, go ahead.
So intolerably high, you know, that was a question from me. I, I mean, that seems like a metric, I guess that's what you were saying, but we need to know what that, what that translates to. I think we need metrics. You know, Tasha mentioned that, you know, come January, the numbers are gonna be higher than they've ever been before. And so I, I do struggle with sending students and teachers and staff back into the buildings when the numbers are higher than they've ever been before. We know a vaccine is coming, but we don't know when it will be available for teachers. And we know that they haven't even tested the vaccine on children under the age of twelve. And so, so I, you know, I'm in favor of metrics, and at the very least, we need to know what intolerably high will, what that means. There has to be, there has to be a number set for that.
And I do think, I, I think we could go back to the committee, for instance, and say, and I should say for all of these committees, they are willing to still work with us. And so if there are things we'd like them to do, like, hey, can you define intolerably high, right? We wanna know what that is. I can tell you just from hearing the discussions of that committee, I think the number's right about two hundred, is what they would, if they were asked to define intolerably high, they'd say two hundred. So we could go back, though, and.
Both, both A and B would say.
Would say two hundred.
The group beef. The report beef, I think, to them, intolerably high would probably be right around two hundred.
So I wanna jump in, because, I mean, New York was mentioned, but if, if you've read the latest update, they, they did have that three percent positivity threshold, where they said if it's above three percent, we're closing all schools. Well, so they closed them. But then they just reopened them because they realized that the damage being done to students was so great. And they also looked at their percent positivity in the schools, and it was zero point two eight percent. So the, what was going on in the schools was significantly lower than what was going on in the community, and it may very well be because of all their mitigation. And so New York City has now abandoned using a citywide metric and is instead focusing on what's happening in the schools. And so I, I believe metrics are very important, and I believe in science. I'm an engineer by degree. I love numbers. I love metrics. However, my job as a school board member is to think about students first. And I know that we can safely have a certain number of students in the buildings right now, because we're doing it. We're doing it with pods. We're doing it at ECLC. We're doing it with extracurriculars. And so I want to identify those students who need to be back, because we are failing many of our students, failing them. And there are students who absolutely need to be back. So I don't think it's an all or nothing answer here. I don't think if we go back or we don't. I think it's, we need to really gradate what we're doing. We need to look at the students who need to go back. First of all, I think we need to get our teachers back in the building. If there are very few students in the building, I think we can get our teachers back in the building safely. I didn't see anything about that in the report. I'd be interested to know what the other board members think about that, what Dr. Doody thinks about that. But I think we can get our teachers back safely, and I feel like that is step one. Because there are many logistics involved in that. We need to help them get their students if they have them in pods or in, in school classrooms, et cetera. We, teachers can get in their classrooms who haven't been in them in a while and feel the logistics of the classroom and the space. And how, you know, how will I feel when there are six, eight, ten, twelve students in this classroom? So like, there's a barrier for not having been in a classroom for nine months to get teachers back. I would really like to see that happen. I would like that to be decided and shared, if that is what, what you in the end, Dr. Doody, and decide to do. But I do think that giving teachers the opportunity to get back in their classrooms will help us also envision what this is gonna look like. Will give them time to get their classrooms ready. And the more advanced notice we give our teachers, it also gives them time to plan. And I feel like the teachers are really the key to our success here, because in the end, first of all, they're the ones who are providing this wonderful academic experience to our students, but also they're going to be ultimately responsible for implementing the majority of the mitigation strategies. So I really, you know, I would like to see that happen. I feel like the metrics that we're looking at, the community metrics, are very valuable. But not just to say we're going back or not. I feel like they can be used to indicate the levels of mitigation that we need to be taking. If cases are very high, then we need to be doing all of these things. As the cases go down, then we can add more students. We can perhaps have less, you know, less of the mitigation measures implemented to the degree that we're doing them right now. So I would like to continue looking at the metrics, because I think it gives us a basis and a reality check for what we need to be doing. But I'm not comfortable saying that if the level's over two hundred, we're not going back, because that means we're not going back now. And we may not go back until twenty twenty-two. And I'm not comfortable with that for our students. I don't feel like it's the right thing for our students. And really, I'm trying to keep their needs in mind. There are many students who are suffering here, so.
I wanna not get distracted, because I feel like this keeps happening, where we're having a conversation about metrics, and then the school board member is like, "I wanna get back kids back in the school." We all wanna get the kids back in school. And I'm tired of getting emails that are like, "Well, you're not the one who wants kids back in school," or whatever. It's like, they're having a conversation about the group that's face-to-face, and they say, "It can't be intolerably high, and you do full return to school." Quote, underline from the group, that's like, "We can't work on a metric number, because we wanna go back." And I just think we should have that conversation, because if I'm staff, and I need to go into a building and teach, and we as a community with, with our children at hand, as a parent, if I'm sending my kid in there, I want my daughters back in school. They need to be. My kindergartner is not flourishing. She should be flourishing. My neighbor's kid should be flourishing. I hear, we all hear you. I just, like, what, two hundred miles per hour on two eighty-five is unreasonable.
So I hear that.
Okay.
When, you know, for instance, with metrics, I mean, there's a temptation to call metrics science. And the problem is that it's not. It's just a number. And numbers can be arbitrary, or they can have meaning.
Right.
But the way that they have meaning is you correlate the number. You say if there's more than, if the incidence rate is above two hundred over fourteen days, there is a high risk of something.
Yeah.
Right now, we don't have that. And right now, the evidence says that even with high incidence rates, we can be safe and there won't be in-school transmission. And so that's how you make, give a metric meaning and make it non-arbitrary. Right now, we just have numbers, and we're just saying we're gonna draw a line, and just for the heck of it, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do.
And I think thoughtably, all of that is a reason why three percent is not, it's, it's not, it's not reasonable.
Yeah, I wanna have metrics, but I would like to have more metrics, school-specific metrics, because I feel like that's what's really more impactful to our teachers' safety and our students' safety.
Repeat that. What, what kinda metrics? I'm sorry, I missed that.
It's like school, school-centric metrics. I wanna, I wanna focus on whether we are open or closed or quarantined or not on the more localized metrics, like what's actually happening in the building. Because I feel like that's where the rubber meets the road. So I like, I like metrics, but I don't wanna arbitrarily set a limit that's a community based on something that's happening if we're talking about including Cobb County, which I'm not totally in favor of either. But I, I would rather, I'd rather say, yes, let's focus on safety.
Yeah.
Let's focus on metrics, but let's focus on metrics that are very meaningful to, like I said, the safety of our students and teachers. And, and then we can react, I think, more intelligently to that. Like, if, if we have cases, if we have transmission, then we react according to our plan, and we have a plan for that.
This is, this is, I think that's what I think, which is that we, and I'm not saying, I'm not antimetric. I'm all about metrics. I'm, I, you know, we need to be looking at the numbers. We need to be tracking them. What I don't want to do is to set, to use them arbitrarily, and why that's gonna keep us from, from doing the right thing, which, in my opinion right now, is to get back to some level of face-to-face. But I'm not saying that if a metric doesn't, I'm saying that we can't not use metrics arbitrarily as our decision points. We need to keep them in mind. We need to track them. And then I, what I'd like to see us focus on is, where are those numbers, but really, what happens? And so if we don't have the certainty that, that some big study would provide, which we don't, then we sort of step into this with all eyes open, and we be ready to react. And so, again, the problem is when you start having in-school transmission. But it means, it puts a lot of emphasis, I think, on extremely good mitigation, which we've got. We're gonna have to sort of change the culture of the classroom, so that kids actually, you know, have to stay distant and keep their masks on. But it also means that when there's a case, you need to have the shock troops come in and do the quarantining, and do the contact tracing, and do the, the analysis to figure out, was there any in-school transmission? And if the answer's no, that means that we're doing a good job. And if the answer's yes, that means, you know, stop. Everybody goes home until we figure out how to make sure that doesn't happen again. But, so instead of just using numbers to say that, I feel like we should, we have no alternative but to use our experience and just to, to kind of wade in.
Yeah.
Test the waters. And, you know, again, we don't have metrics on the side to say, "What happens when you take six months or a year out of a teenager's life, let him sit in his bedroom?" Right? I mean, we don't have metrics to say, "At what point, you know, does it break?" Right? And so we, we're not gonna have metrics. We just can't, it's just not that simple, I don't think. I think that we, we kinda have to take a step and, you know, be ready to react.
Yeah.
Um, I guess the only thing is that while the student is at home, they are safe and healthy versus maybe, you know, them getting sick at school. Or, I mean, there was a Paulding County nurse last week that died, both she and her husband died. And so her, Paulding County hasn't released, you know, what, what they have done in terms of contact tracing. And I'm not saying that, I, I understand, as I said the last school board meeting, we are all suffering. Right? This is nothing that any of us have ever experienced in our lifetimes. And, you know, I couldn't spend, this is my first time in my life, I couldn't spend Thanksgiving with, with my parents, right? And they were home in their separate houses alone. That was like heartbreaking. So we're all, you know, we're all suffering. But I, I guess, in thinking about the students, you know, again, my thing is, is if they got COVID and they got the, the disease where their internal organs become inflamed, you know, what are the long-term implications for, for them or for their teachers, who possibly would get, you know, even sicker if they contacted COVID? So, you know, I think that, right now, we have our, some of our most vulnerable students are in, in school, and I think that that's helpful. But I, I'm worried about bringing, I'm worried about bringing a larger number of students back into the building at the height of this pandemic.
I wanted to just go back to what Heather brought up, because it may be something we could decide on and agree on if we feel like the teachers should be back in the building. I personally.
That's the second topic that I wanted to make sure we got.
Oh, Heather brought it up.
Go ahead.
I mean, I personally think that, that we should. I think it's time. I think teachers miss being in the classroom. I think about some of the teachers who have just started with us and have never even been in their classroom.
In principals.
In principals. Oh, yes, that's right, in principals. And I would be curious to see what the Teacher Advisory Council says about that. I would like to hear kind of, you know, the teacher's perspective on that. But, you know, I know that a lot of, a few other districts have teachers going in that don't necessarily have all their students in. And I certainly think that's a good first step to this process, and see how, see how that goes. See, see how the teachers are doing, and really make sure that we keep in, keep the line of communication open with them like they're doing. But, so I would be curious to know what the Teacher Advisory Council, what their suggestion is about teachers being in the buildings. I personally think that, that that could be something we could start, to start the process.
Yeah, I, I mean, and I can tell you for sure that if it's voluntary, they're on board with it, right? If they say, which is what we're doing right now. So we do have teachers that are back in the building, teaching from their classroom virtually. But it's a hundred percent voluntary right now, unless you're an ECLC teacher or a, the high-need special ed teacher, right? So I do think we would, my guess is, and I, and I will, I'll check with them. But my guess is, as long as we expanded our accommodation process to include other categories of people, such as teachers who live with a high-risk individual, and we allowed them to have the option to teach virtually from home as opposed to being required in, I think they would probably be supportive of it, as long as we expanded what we're doing now. So I would have to check with them to be sure, because we haven't asked that specific question. But I do know one of the concerns is making sure we expand that process to include, to scoop in more people, who it may not be their personal risk, but risk of a loved one that lives with them, for instance. Does that make sense? So I'm pretty sure that would be the primary concern, if we did, if we were gonna say, "You all have to come back."
Which, which I think is reasonable, and we, that was talked about during the town hall.
Yeah.
But I, but again, I think that's the same thing, like, that's our plan all along. Like, that's what our plan is for teachers going back, as far as I understand it. But we are, we are going through the accommodations process, and we're working with teachers and finding ways to make them feel comfortable and that, and that we're taking this into consideration. So I agree with that. I'm not talking about forcing teachers who don't wanna go back, go back. But I do think saying that, "Let's start taking this first step of the process of going back and executing our plan regarding the accommodations process," that I, I feel like it's time to do that. And, and, you know, I, I just wanna reiterate, I, I, I'm very concerned about teacher safety, and I want to keep this safe. I'm not saying in any way to do something that's, you know, against, against this procedure that we're putting in place, against working with teachers, and also, of course, having all the mitigation measures in place to keep, to keep all of our students and teachers safe. And I think safety is fundamental, and so, but I think we have a very well-thought-through plan as to how to do that.
Can I, I'm cognizant of the time, and I really wanna get one more. I wanna share something with you guys and get your feedback on it, if we can. The, one of the, as we went through the report, there were some really key things that jumped out at us as the administrative team for planning purposes. So one of the things that we saw in the report, and we also have heard from many teachers, was the concerns about how do you implement a hundred percent mask-wearing when you're doing things like serving food at school? You can't, you're not eating with your mask on, for instance. And so we've been brainstorming, okay, so how do you tackle that, right? What does that look like? If that is the biggest concern about, you know, that area, how do you tackle it? So we've gone through a, a series of kind of iterations of thinking through these things. How do you make sure you limit the class size? How do you try to make sure you have cohorting as much as possible? You'll see that throughout the report again and again, the importance of cohorting, and what does that look like? So one of the things we talked about with Teacher Advisory Council yesterday was an approach where, and it kind of gets to your point, Heather, of getting a foot in the door, of trying to figure out if we can do this successfully or not and what it looks like. And that is, consider a schedule where we have kids come back, but they're only coming back for like four hours. And it's that we're not serving breakfast or lunch. We can give them breakfast and lunch, but they're not gonna eat it at school, right? They're, they're gonna eat it at home, and kind of do that four-hour a day, so the teachers can focus on what is most important for me to do in person with this group of kids, and that's what I'm gonna do right now. But the rest of the day is gonna be virtual. Once they get home, the second half of the day will do virtually. And so that may be when they're doing their specials in elementary. That may be when their teacher's doing. That may be when their teacher's doing some other activity that can be done virtually. And doing kind of a, that kind of approach in order to try to tackle some of those biggest concerns, right? I think it'd be very difficult at the high school level to do that exact thing. And so the high school is looking at other options. And you heard Rochelle talk a little bit about the challenges, but I'd love to get your thoughts about that in terms of if we, depending on exactly where we land with metrics and that kind of concept, although it sounds to me like we're kind of like, what's kind of divine or unreasonable, but let's also look at the stats internally, not externally necessarily, which by the way, we can do. We will, we will be prepared to track that. But, um, this kind of approach could probably work up through eighth grade because we have teams at, at Renfro, and I know they've been working hard on what the schedules could look like. So I'd be curious in your thoughts of that, of it's not getting kids back all day, but it is getting them back in person, it's, um, for those who, who choose it, right? We'll still have folks who choose virtual. And you've heard the schools and some of the principals tonight talking about, for some of the schools, that's going to mean having to shuffle kids around a little, right? And so who you have for your virtual or your in-person teacher may not be the exact same person across the board throughout the entire district. If we go to a plan like this, you heard Curtis at Claremont say, they're really trying to not make a change. They're trying to figure out how to do it without that, but there may be instances where that has to happen. So there's pros and cons of all of these approaches. But for us, that's one of the best ideas I think we've come up with yet, where we can address some of those high-level concerns. I think, I felt like the feedback from the teachers was very positive. They shared some ideas of how to make it better. So we'll, we'll work through those, but I'd love to get your thoughts over that idea of, we're going to bring you in, do four hours in person, send you home, we're not eating there, we're keeping you in a cohort, and we're working around a lot of those more major issues that way and not implementing them yet at this point. You have any thoughts on that?
I think it's creative. I think it's, I think it's focusing on the core subjects, which I think is important. And from what I've been learning about, you know, some of the schools that have been doing standardized testing, they're losing most in math. And so I think if we can get our kids back face-to-face for the core subjects, especially at those lower grades, that would be great. And also, um, like I want to talk about Wednesdays. Maybe we could address core subjects on Wednesdays and just do half the day as opposed to having-
Well, and so with this approach, we're thinking we probably would not do Wellness Wednesday, as you see it now. They would come five days a week. And you may have other activities in the afternoon where you incorporate some of the mental health-type exercises and stuff, but we would probably not do Wellness Wednesday as it exists. One of the things, of course, teachers are worried about is prep time, so we made sure to figure out what that would look like, so they would have even more prep time than they have right now, probably, built into the schedule, so. Other thoughts?
Is this something that you would potentially survey the teachers about? Or are you, you feel like you have enough feedback from the Teacher Advisory Council?
Um, I'm not sure we really have the time to get extensive feedback from the teachers and still notify people before holiday break, but, um, we are talking in Teacher Advisory Council about the potential of surveying teachers on this and some other issues. And so maybe, we might, we might try to get a survey out to teachers for some of these things, but I don't want to commit to it a hundred percent because we haven't had another meeting to discuss it yet. But for sure, Teacher Advisory Council, we've already told them, we're going to be getting together at least one more time next week to talk through whatever comes out of this meeting and potentially the board meeting.
My part, I think it sounds like a good, um, potential solution. And it sounds like the way that I would like to use, and we talked about metrics and risk and all that stuff. So for a very high-risk environment, there's, there's an extra mitigation that we can do.
Right.
And, and so I think that that's a, a good balance in a, in a high-risk situation, which we're going to be in. Because I, because if you can get, if you can get, get the kids in, just getting the kids in for some period of time on a regular basis, I think is so important. If we can do that in a way, by not having lunch, that we significantly reduce the risk to everybody, I think that's worth considering.
Yeah, I like that. It's almost like a sliding scale, you know, like the higher the community, because if you think these metrics are valuable, higher the community spreads, then we do more of these measures, which might include the half-day. And once we fall below a certain number, we can maybe go back to full day with, with a limited number of kids. And then when we get lower, we can take more kids in and so on. So it's almost like it's, like it's a, a balance that we have to, to do. And I just also want to just mention, because before all this began, we were really, really focused on equity and about, on equity and on reducing our achievement gap. And I just want to emphasize, we all know this, but there's nothing equitable about this pandemic. And we have no idea yet what the impact is going to look like once we are through this. And this would be a way, I think, to, to bring back some of that equity into what we are doing as educators, to offer this to our students to come in and, you know, particularly for the core subjects. I think that would be, through an equity lens, I think it's also a good suggestion.
So, so- Go ahead. I think it's definitely very important, and I think the hard part for that part of the conversation is, on the flip side, and answers kind of your question, Louis, of, of the level of risk, you know, African-Americans and brown people experience COVID at a higher rate. Because we have a higher rate of some of those underlying issues. And so then you have the issue of kids going to school and potentially bringing it back to their parents that have diabetes or high, high cholesterol or something like that. So that part is very, very hard, because I think there's, there isn't, there is a downfall in the equity on both sides. And again, it's going to then go back to, to sides. And I, that part is just heartbreaking. I like the, um, option of the four hours. Of the sliding scale, I think it would really kind of answer that question. And then we can kind of just watch and see. And it really does put, starts to, it doesn't push us all the way out there and jumping into the pool all the way, but it does kind of put our foot in there. And, um, maybe we'll bring together both sides of the conversation a little bit closer to each other than they have been in a very long time. It doesn't personally feel all that great on my inside, but if I take, you know, if I keep my school board hat on and think about the big picture and what this could potentially do for our children, especially ones who are suffering, then I think four hours in school would make a huge difference. And then I think we can really watch how that plays out and start to collect our own numbers and see how the numbers are moving, how everything is looking without necessarily having everybody in the building all the time. Um, I have a friend who went to meet somebody for lunch. They wore a mask the entire time except when they were eating. And one of them had COVID and didn't know it and gave it to the other one. And so, um, and she's very sick. So I think eating is, is huge. The eating portion of it, you end up kind of talking a lot when you're eating, things like that. And so if we could cut that huge concern out, at least for now, that does make me feel a lot better.
And I do, I do want to mention one thing, because there definitely is a different impact racially of, of COVID and as well in what people are going to select for in-person or virtual for that exact reason, right? And so it is essential that if we were to go this route, the virtual-only kids would still need to have a very robust program. And we continue to try to improve our virtual program too. I just want to emphasize that, that this isn't a give up on the virtual so that we can do this in-person. It's both and, right? And so I want to emphasize that, because I do think there could be a racial component to that as well.
I think-
There definitely is. My answer to this is the same thing as my answer to the teachers back in school. We, you just, we need to justify and have a good argument for it. I mean, four-hour day without the context of like, because eating is a dangerous spot and it does solve some mental health stuff and it solves, okay, I'm on board now. Four-hour day in a vacuum, like what the, what, what does that solve? So I get four hours of exposure and I'm back in the building? I don't know, that didn't make, and same thing with back in the building. If you have a reason that it benefits our kids for the teachers to be back in the building, sure, I'm, I'm on board. We got to make sure that we're justified, because it just sounds like people are like, make the teachers go to a building without solving childcare, giving them the choice or- I heard you say, expanding it to cover spouses and people that they live at home. I mean, we've heard some horrible teachers, stories from some staff here who's, who are taking care of their, and have lost loved ones.
And I was, I was going to say the same thing, James, in terms of, you know, what would be different about a teacher being back in the building? If it's, if it's optional now, I know that teachers, if they wanted to go and teach from the building, they could right now. But nothing really changes in terms of their instruction or, or, you know, what they are delivering to their students if, if it's happening virtually. And the other thing I was thinking about, four hours of risk, you know, if it only takes fifteen minutes, four hours of exposure, maybe if it only takes fifteen minutes, and that's still a significant risk. And so I just want to clarify that it, that's something that we would consider. And we say we want to watch to see what our numbers are like. We would still need to set some parameters in terms of, to know what to look for if this, if, if it seems like it's, how, how would we know it's not working, you know? We would still have to set some metrics in terms of, you know, even within this, with this four-hour suggestion, you know, how many would be too many to continue with four hours? You know, we would still need to set some boundaries in terms of what to look for.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Dana.
Is how many is too many? I mean, I think the first outbreak that we have, that's when you shut it down until you figure it out. And at that point, you know, you know that it was too many because we had an outbreak. We, we transmitted it, our mitigation didn't work, something didn't work.
Is that one ca, is that, but what would be an outbreak? What's, what's considered?
Right now, an outbreak is two or more cases at a, a single site that you can't figure out how they are connected together. And so you assume that the transmission occurred at school.
And so if you, if you, if, if that occurred, that means that our mitigation didn't work.
Correct.
And at that point, we need to stop and figure it out.
So let, let me give an example of this, because it can be difficult to picture. So let's use what was in the news recently. So if the high school students decide to go have a Halloween party and they're passing around COVID at the party, when they come back to school and we recognize all these kids are positive, we can connect them together as to why they're positive and it's not school-related, so that's not a school outbreak. However, if we have two kids in a school and there is no connection that we can decipher between them of how that transmission occurred, we consider it an outbreak until we have evidence otherwise. So at that point, you then closed down the school, not just the individual classrooms.
I did want to comment, we only have a minute or two, but, uh, to weigh in in support of the, I mean, I, I agree, and I hear, uh, Dana's comment, that how is it different to have the teachers in the building than have them at home? I had an hour and a half conversation with my sister, who's in the Chapel Hill system, had been called in without students, and she was extremely upset about it. And so I, I kind of, I kind of have a particular insight to the way that she thinks about it. What I would say is that, um, it, it seems to me that psychologically it is a difference to have people coming in to the school so that they're actually ready. And I think there's a psychological barrier of coming back to the place of work. And I think that it's healthy for us to get back into the mode of actually being at work. And so, and also being, uh, here, there, it means that you're going to be ready and you've thought through what's going to need to happen, and have your room set up to be safe. You can actually take a look at the spacing and figure out, you know what? Instead of ten kids, I can only accommodate nine. But you've, you've been in the building thinking about those things, how can I arrange a table, all that kind of stuff. So I think there's value in that. It means that we're ready to come back when it's time. I also think that there's less value, like on the, on the accommodations scale, I think that we should be more generous with accommodations, because the value of having them in, I think it's not nothing, but it's not as, as great having them in person to class. And if someone has significant childcare issues or whatever, it, another advantage is that if you're coming into the building, you solve that stuff. And so you don't have to put off coming in to teach in order to fix that, you know, you, you got it worked out. But I also think that we can be, we can work with people and we can be reasonable and we can recognize that the balance is a little bit different if those are the reasons they're coming in, rather than live instruction. So I guess I would just say, take kind of a light hand and be generous with the accommodations. But my, I would favor, you know, kind of bringing the, as the default, bringing people in.
Other thoughts?
No, we're running short on time. I, I would love, you started off with saying that we can expect a plan as early as Monday, as late as Wednesday, if it's okay with everyone else. I would love to hear an outline of what you mean by a plan. I know the last school, school meeting we had a rough.
So what I mean by a plan would be, for instance, what does the schedule look like for, so let's use this as an example. If the plan is, we're going to go for four hours a day. Here are the grade levels that are going to come back at this time, and here are the grade levels that are going to come back at this time. Here's what our busing plan is going to look like in terms of how we plan to mitigate on buses for transportation, so that kids who have to use buses, the parents, before they make their selection, know what that's going to look like, right, of how they plan there. We would have a much better idea of what our instructional method is going to look like, because once we have a, a feel for which, which direction we're going, so let's use this as an example. If we know that at, say, K eight, we're going to have four hours a day in person and we're going to have four hours a day roughly, let's say, not in person, what's that going to look like, right? And so we'll be able to explain more of, here's how we're going to handle specials. Here's how we're going to handle your core classes. Here's what the schedule is going to look like at Renfro. Here's how we're going to handle keeping kids in cohorts so that we don't have intermixing. At the elementary level, here's how we're going to handle recess, because four hours is a long time for a kindergartner to sit, right? And so how are we going to handle those things and come up, share some of those details in, in terms of a plan? Oh, there were others on my, top of my head. Oh, pardon, um, kind of the details about what changes, you know, we have a lot of stuff worked out already in terms of mitigations, but there are some great recommendations in this report. So detailing like, here's what our mitigation plan was, but now here are the changes that we're making as a result of the report, so people know what that looks like. I think the plan would have to address metrics and what the role of metrics are going to be. Like we talked about tonight, is it going to be kind of a, what is the unreasonable high versus, um, specific numbers telling us exactly what happens? And as well as the use of internal metrics of monitoring within. I think making sure, and again, we have a lot of this defined already, but reiterating like the, what does it mean to have an outbreak? Reiterating our communication protocol of, as a parent, when will I get called? When will I know that my kid has been at school and someone there had COVID? Like those kind of things. And so some of it will be reiterating what we already have.
Yeah.
So that's, that's kind of the gist of it, I think I did on most of the areas, I can't-
That's a big plan. I guess, um, to circle back to the beginning, your general idea is that there will still be a virtual option?
Oh, absolutely. I think no matter what, we have to add a virtual option at least through the end of the year. I would really like to lean towards having an actual virtual school in the future so that if, because like you said, like you said, it's quite possible that this is going to be with us for a long time. And there are other needs for which virtual is a solution. And so developing with that virtual academy idea so that we could get that implemented, so that we can definitely get through the end of this year, but also have that as a possibility for future years as well.
I just wanted to share a couple of notes that I took from GSBA on this subject, actually, on COVID. And, um, the people that were presenting their schools are, are in. And so, um, it was just kind of neat to kind of hear their perspective on things. The first one was communication, which we've heard. So I think, you know, even the ones that went back to school, there were still a, a good amount of their community that feels, that felt like the communication was not, was not stellar. Um, and so it looks like that was just kind of a common theme for all the schools. So just, I, us continuing to get to a point of over-communicating. Subs has been a problem for some of the schools, because when they do have to quarantine a class and the teacher gets quarantined, they have to try to find a sub to take over that class. because when they do have to quarantine a class, when the teacher gets quarantined, they have to try to find a sub to take over that class, and apparently that's been, um, pretty hard to do, um, so that's just something to kinda keep, keep an eye on. Um, even in the schools where they all went back or had the choice to go back, communities were still seeing a lot of division, one being, do you highly suggest wearing masks? Do you require them to wear masks, if they don't wear a mask, do you get in trouble, is it punitive? And actually, a lot of communities were, were half and half on that, like James was saying, how some of Georgia, you know, a lot of Georgia just doesn't believe in the, in the pandemic at all, and, um, were arguing that their child shouldn't be forced to wear a mask. So there were some issues there, one good plan I heard was the, uh, but, all the bus drivers have masks on their bus, you probably heard that, and so that way it's not punitive if a kid gets on without one, you just hand it to them and then they can go sit in the back. Um, just wanna make sure I got everything, just, there was a couple of good notes here. Um, with the mental health, they said that, um, to Louis's point, there was just like a breath of fresh air for a lot of the kids coming back into the school and they kinda could see, um, see that in a lot of the kids. But the other aspect that they are also seeing is kids, um, really taking it pers- taking it to heart if they get somebody sick.
Right.
Or if they get one of their family members sick, and so they're still going in to see their counselor and they are completely just stressed out and have anxiety about getting a family member ill. And so I think with the mental, mental health and Wellness Wednesdays that we've been setting up, that's still gonna have to be just as robust, it's just gonna have to be for a different reason. Um, because there, there's definitely that, that space for kids and, and, you know, just kind of this heaviness, but I think being at home, at least they don't worry about that part. And so they're just worrying about one new thing with being at home, so we need to just make sure we're helping kids address that stress and anxiety as well. Um, okay, that was it, just wanted to share the notes I heard.
Thank you, appreciate that.
My last question about the plan, and then I think I've done, is, uh, in terms of curriculum, would that be part for what's now, are we still working on that? I know concurrent was.
Um, I, I think what you mean is like the instructional model, is that right?
Yes, yep.
So, the, uh, that is definitely going to be part of what we're, um, sharing when we have a plan. And I think it's critical because we heard from parents, they need to know what the plan is in that regard in order to make a logical choice, an informed choice, so, yes. I don't know exactly how specific, but, um, for instance, we need to know, if you choose virtual, does that mean that your kid's teacher changes? If you choose in person, does that mean your kid's teacher changes? Does it mean it's concurrent? Does it mean it's not concurrent? You're gonna get, you know, like, what does that look like? I think we need to have fairly specific, um, so that is part of the plan. We, we hope to have as much detail as we can for people with that.
Uh, what were your feelings, I mean, the, the committee did it and the, sort of the science on concurrent seemed to be pretty far behind some of the other stuff? And then, um, do you know?
So, I think like you heard, um, Rochelle say tonight, I think part of it depends on where you're doing it, right?
Okay.
And so at the high school, it's actually, a lot of the teachers are pushing for, we can do concurrent.
Okay.
It works for us, it works in our environment, with our subject matter, with our students, whatever. Um, and I hear from a lot of, like, the K two classes or the K two principals saying, it doesn't work for us, or we don't wanna do that, right? We, we would rather shuffle kids and reassign who their teacher is and not have concurrent than have concurrent. So, that's why we're trying to approach it from what's best for kids at any given level, not just having a blanket statement saying, this is good, this is bad.
Okay.
This, I don't know why this thought just occurred to me, but given the number of things that, that, that we need to be thinking about, someone at the town hall asked, are we currently planning for the next school year? And the answer is like, you know, we're, we're trying to stay afloat, um, we're trying to think about next year. Do we need more staff at the central office, um, in order to, um, 'cause we need to have a plan at the last meeting, someone made the very good comment, that we need to have a very robust remedial plan for when we get back to work, how do we heal all the wounds that we've opened over the past year? And in order to be thinking that far ahead, at the same time that we're trying to figure out the immediate, just, I mean, one of our, one of the downsides of this district is just that we have a great small team, but it's a small team and, you know, can only do so many things at once. If you need, if we need either some consulting help or some new, new, you know, brain powers, additional brain power, be thinking about that.
No, we will, we will, and we are kicking off the budget process like I talked about in the, in the town hall, so we will be talking through some of the, the needs that we see into the future, for sure.
And, uh,
Oh, go ahead, Dana.
Thank you, just on the same lines, I know that, uh, earlier substitutes came up and that, um, you know, if we, when we go back in, into the, uh, buildings that, you know, what will happen, um, if, if teachers get sick and, you know, we, right now, we only have thirty-six subs. And so, you know, if it's possible, because I know pre-pandemic substitutes were an issue, particularly at Renfro, and teachers had to cover classes, and, um, now that we're in a pandemic and, you know, the likelihood of folks getting sick is, is increased, um, you know, I, it's just, teachers will end up having to teach concurrently, is, is what was expressed earlier, if, you know, there're not, no subs available, and that's already an issue, and so, there's any way we can, well, I guess that we have an affair coming up, right, that's, um.
Yeah, so we are doing efforts like that, but the other thing I'd emphasize is, that's one of the reasons we're trying to hire those ten to fifteen extra teachers, so that we have actual certified teachers ready to pop in where we need them. And it's also why we're planning to keep the pod facilitators on, those who will stay with us, we're planning to keep them for that exact reason, so that we have additional adults who are ready to step in where we need them, so. It's not gonna be cheap, but it's gonna make this possible.
I had just a couple comments, you said, or, you started out by talking about the metrics and whether they should come from all those counties, and I just wanna weigh in, that I think that, like, if there were a way to proportionately account for that, I would be in favor of it. But if we're gonna give all those counties equal weight in our metrics, it doesn't make sense to me because my family spends a hundred percent of our time in DeKalb County, with the exception of, you know, two hours a week or something, so. And I, I, I just feel like we'll be more accurate if we at least proportionally account for where we believe people are truly spending their time.
Right, okay.
Then, um, just one interesting thing I noticed, um, and I appreciate Tasha's comments about the GSBA conference, it was really helpful, figure what other school districts were experiencing, but I, this report that we received from our committee did not recommend temperature checks.
Correct.
But I thought about that more in today, um, and yesterday, as the GSBA, many districts are doing it, I'd be interested to know where our teachers think, and if it makes them feel more comfortable.
Well, I'll tell you, that's exactly the feedback that I've received from many different experts, is temperature checks are theater, that it's, it's making people feel comfortable but not actually changing anything, and so if you're doing it, that's why you're doing it. You're doing it so that people feel comfortable and not that it can actually make any difference.
Well, so I get that about asymptomatics, not catching that, but I also think that it could actually prevent people from sending their kids to school if they know they're just gonna get sent home if they have a temperature.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure I completely buy that.
Sure.
I think that there's, I mean, clearly, if it's, if, if it's not expensive to do and, and they have these machines that are not very expensive, that stand by the door and you just walk up to it and it reads your temperature, could it, then, could there be some benefit to it?
We could certainly consider it, um.
I just think there could be, and it also could be the preventative aspect of, well, 'cause I just don't believe that every family's gonna take their child's temperature every day before they send them to school.
Yeah.
I know we're having those forums, but I'm not sure how effective those will be either.
I think the concern though is that, like, it wouldn't be a concern necessarily now, but it becomes a concern as you get closer to summer, because all of those are skin temperature scanners.
Okay.
And when a kid has, you know, jogged all the way to school and now you're scanning their forehead, it may not be an accurate representation of their actual temperature, is part of the, and, and, so the, the concern is false positives.
Okay.
You got a temperature, now, there are ways to work around that, right? Like, hey, we think that may be 'cause you just jogged to school, so we're gonna wait ten minutes and take your temperature. Yeah, so there are, there are ways to work around it, um, so yeah, we can definitely talk about temperature checks more.
Anything within reason, that isn't expensive, that's not too hard, that could possibly make the school safer is worth considering.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate the committee's, and, and recommendation there, but I just heard things differently, you know, at the conference heading yesterday, so.
Sure.
And the other thing is just, um, there were some recommendations around testing, so I'd be interested to, to kind of, I'm interested to hear what, what you, um, are gonna come back with regarding that. It wasn't, you know, the report didn't recommend specifics as to do it, you know, on a regular basis or such, but some of that was left up to us.
Right.
To decide. Um, and some, you know, many schools are doing it regularly and are benefiting from testing and, um, I know cost is a factor, but it could be something that, you know, our families may be willing to pay for it or we may be able to get some subsidies, or, you know, if we have cases, are we doing, able to do rapid tests in schools?
Well, a- as of right now, no, although the state got rapid tests, we just haven't heard what's happening with them. So there are, there may be some opportunities for some of that.
Yeah.
Um, and I also think we have to acknowledge the role of the vaccine too, right? So we may make some plans right now that by the time we get to, say, February, we may have to be adjusting as to, 'cause one of the things, I can't remember if it was in the report or in some of the comments I was reading of, um, uh, at the point that we know a vaccine is readily available, are we now going to be able to require that somebody be vaccinated in order to come back? I think is one of, a type of a question that we may have to answer in the future, um, as times change, right? And as we learn more, so.
Yes.
It, it, test, testing good, for the record.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, that's a game changer, and I'd love to see the cost for that versus testing. As someone who's about, you know, I talk to people who work in the movie industry now, and they are up and they are running and they're just like, they're being tested every day when they go into work, during the hall.
Just three times a week, they're tested.
You know, and, and people in, in the restaurant industry are, that are, that are surviving, from my friends at the Giving Kitchen, like, that can be a game changer, and it, and I don't know the price of that, but.
On that, on that thing, and I, I ask, I know that there's an answer to this, but I, I don't know what the answer is. But I particularly liked that Georgia Tech fell pool testing, so you reduce the cost by getting twenty samples together. And then you just do one test, and if it turns out to be positive, you know that one of those twenty. So somebody in that cluster's got it.
And now you go test just those, you know.
Seems like such a smart plan, from what I hear, it's been hugely successful, and I'm, and I'm wondering why we can't do something like that.
So this is an example of a great i- idea that if the board feels, hey, we really need, let's say, temperature checks, we think that's something we really need to consider more, or testing, a, a testing plan, not just a whatever. I can go back to those committees, 'cause they're all willing to talk about these things and still consider them and give them some specific questions, like, hey, we really think there needs to be some testing plan? Like, what would be the best course for the money that we spend, what would be the best option, you know, that kinda thing, so. I can definitely ask.
I, I, mandatory testing seems to me to be the thing that most everyone would, would agree would be the dealmaker here. Because the answer to all of the data that's coming out, like, schools aren't super spreaders, schools are super spreaders, oh, this is, we're not testing the kid, I mean, if we did that, as, as someone who would work in a building, I'm all of a sudden, I'm very comfortable. As someone who's sending my kid to school, I'd be very comfortable.
Yeah. Um, and I'll have to check, I, I do not remember exactly, at one point, there was a talk, talk about that, and I think, even though I told them, don't let budget be your first, whatever, whatever the number was, it was something like fifty thousand dollars a week to do the mandatory testing. Um, at that point, they were like, we're not even gonna save it, you should do this, but I can go back and ask for, I, and, and I'm just making that number up, 'cause I don't remember the exact number, I just know it's super high, so.
Yeah, okay.
It is something we can talk about for sure, though, 'cause we, we did share with all the committees, don't let budget be the first thing that has to rule something out, because we do have a very resourceful community, right? And we may be able to find ways to do certain things, so.
Well, then, maybe at least, uh, you know, I, I guess the committee did consider it and didn't decide to recommend testing before we allow students back after the break. But if that's a teacher concern, like, did, you know, was there a lot of travel, was there a lot of commingling of groups? Maybe that would be worth doing, even if it was just a one-time, it might not, if, if we can't afford to continue to do it regularly.
And I think the committee would actually agree with that as well, of, there, there may be other reasons like that.
Yeah.
To bring comfort to people of knowing, yes, we did this one-time test because we know you're worried about what happened over those three weeks of holiday break, for instance, right? So, I definitely think they would be supportive of that.
And just an administrative thing, but, um, New York City, I was reading, their, their students were not allowed back in person unless the parents found a consent form allowing testing, which we might consider, 'cause then it would give us the ability, the ability, if we did get access to rapid tests, and if we were doing contact tracing in the schools, to be able to have, you know, the, the authority and ability to, to test students.
That's a good question, and the other one that has come up is, if you're sending your kid back, signing a pledge that you will commit to whatever requirements we have of, like, monitoring your kid's temperature, telling us of whatever. Not that they're necessarily binding, but just as a reminder to people to say.
I think that that's good.
You, you are committing to X, Y, and Z.
Absolutely.
By us taking your child, you know.
And I think our community will be receptive to that because.
I think they will be too.
We, you know, we, we all wanna support each other.
Hey, one other, um, thing in terms of, um, I know Heather mentioned, um, the other areas that would be considered in terms of the number of cases per one hundred thousand, and, uh, I remember reading in the report that the committee said that because people come from different areas, and isn't it true that most CSD teachers don't live in the district?
Most, most of our staff do not live in the district, but most of them do live in DeKalb County.
Okay.
Well, we, we've run over a little bit, we could stay longer if y'all want, but otherwise. Jordan?
Do we, do you feel like we've covered everything?
This is super helpful, I, like, I, I feel like I've gotten the answers I need from you guys of what your perspective is, um. I am curious, I guess, my final question would be, do you feel like, um, I, I'm trying to balance getting information to people as quickly as possible with, um, like, having your opportunity to vet whatever it is. So, do, like, where are you on the continuum of, if we're ready to go on Monday, sharing what a plan is, do we go for it? Or make sure we come back on Tuesday to share more specifics before we go out to the rest of the community with things? Like, where are you on that continuum of the board's involvement in what's the next answer of whatever it looks like?
For me, a huge thing would be, what is, um, you know, the, um, what was the, the term, intolerably high? That's a, like, they would, why, because this, you, you know, you suggested the four, you know, possibly the four-hour, um, school day, but I, I would still like to know, well, you know, what would, I mean, would that include the, out, if there's an outbreak, then that would be shut down, if it's two hundred, then we're not going back or we're shutting down before, you know? That's the only thing that I would, I'd like to know.
Dana, would it help if, um, we were able to get some input from the, that whole metric subcommittee on that in, in making our decision of where that would be? Would that help you, knowing that they had that question before you?
No.
Not to put you on the fire.
I, I, no, I think I would, I would like to, I think that's, it's so significant.
Yeah.
Intolerably high is so vague, and, you know, that, you know, is it gonna be two hundred? Um, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm wondering, given where we are and given how soon the meeting is, I'm wondering if we should just serve it up for discussion at the meeting? It, it just seems like a natural thing to do.
And you set the expectation that Wednesday would be the latest release, it's, you know, there's, there's.
Then we have to come to a consensus Tuesday, and Friday's the last day of school before we're out.
Um, and we have to, we have to honor the fact that we've delegated this decision. You've received your input from us, and so you're gonna make your decisions based on it.
Well, what we can aim to do is have as fully baked of a plan as possible by Tuesday night. Um, so that, that is like our final draft, and one last opportunity for, for input before we go to practice on, on Wednesday. And obviously, I mean, by discussing it at the board level, it's also an opportunity for the community to have a preview of all of that and have their chance to give input, you know, so, you could definitely do that.
It would be most helpful to get it, and I know you don't have any time at all, but instead of five o'clock Tuesday, uh, ten o'clock.
Four forty-five.
They're gonna have Tuesday to read.
We, we will work as hard as we can to get it to you as soon as we can. We, we will work as hard as we can to get it to you as soon as we can.
And one other comment on the survey, but will you indicate what time period those selections are valid for? Like, are they binding for the term or the year?
We have been talking about like, where do we strike that balance between the certainty of, hey, once you decide it's through the end of the year and now we don't have to worry about switching? And the variability of, hey, if you're able to switch every week, we can't plan. You know, like where is that balance point? So we will have that discussion.
Yeah.
Because I do think people need to know what they're committing to, like for how long.
Because if I really want my kid back at school, but I'm willing to say, I'll, I'll, you know, step it down and let other kids go if others need it more, I would, but what if, you know, I realize in a month, my kid's not doing so great either? You know, it's just, I think it would just, would be nice for families to at least know what they're committing to and for how long.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
James, you look like you were about to. Oh, I, I was answering the first question and then got distracted, but I guess I'm less interested in my need to have feedback on it. I mean, you have a great team. You got a great cabinet. To me, people, here's a fact, people are filling in a lack of information with bad information right now. So the clearer that's communicated on your end, I think the better, more, more than that. So whatever time you need to work with your team to get their feedback. And the same way that you heard me repeat over and over, I don't care what I say, we got, you know, we got epidemiology. I'll add them what they say, you know?
And to that end, that is one of the reasons we let Teacher Advisory Council know we need to do it together again next week for that exact discussion, for instance.
We're good at letting you know, I think, of what the community thinks and checking if it's feedback and you're missing this and that. But really, it's the time you need to make sure that Courtney and Sarah and Heidi and, you know, have looked it over and talked about it. To me, that's what will make a good plan.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Sounds good.
All right, this is super helpful. I, I really appreciate it. And I, and like we said already, we can't say it enough, how awesome this committee was that all these folks stepped up and they put in a lot of hours into this and shared a lot of expertise. And we're just very lucky to have all those people that were willing to do that, so.
Who helped you facilitate that? That's one heck of a, that's one heck of a.
So huge kudos to Mark Raspberry. He stepped up to help me figure out how do you manage sixty people or seventy people and actually get something good out of it? So he's, we're going to have to figure out how to give him some kind of award because
Absolutely.
he, he really stepped up. He jumped between subcommittees and helped them, you know, kind of problem solve, how to approach their work. And I've learned lots of great things from him on how to facilitate that kind of thing. So that was awesome. And he even had some friends who don't even live in the school district, have no connection to the school district, and were on Zoom calls with me Sunday night at eight o'clock, giving us ideas for what we need to do and how to do it and willing to jump back in anytime. So there are a lot of amazing people, guys like that. It's so awesome.
That's pretty awesome.
I'm glad you mentioned that. Thank you for bringing that up.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mark Raspberry.
Thanks, David, and thanks to your staff and to the community and the committee members.
We now adjourned it.
All right.
Bye, Dana.
Good night.
Bye, Dana.
Bye, Dana.